Uh, my clock shows it's nine o'clock. Uh, I will call to order the December twenty ninth, twenty twenty meeting of the Seline County Board of Commissioners. And it appears that, uh, Tammy is the acting clerk today, so I will ask that Tammy please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Okay, at this time, I would ask that you please join me in a, in a moment of silence, please. And thank you. Uh, I would ask that, uh, I'm, I'm not sure who's representing the county at the switchboard, Brad or Lauren or Kevin or whoever, uh, that you please explain to the, uh, public, uh, the procedure to join the meeting if they so desire.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. This is Brad. Assuming that the, that the folks participating in the Zoom meeting have the Zoom client open. If you take your mouse or cursor down to the participants area of the screen and left click one time, you will see a raise hand function show up over in the lower right-hand portion of your screen. When you select raise hand, that gives the host the indication that you would like to speak.
All right. Thank you. And at this time, we will move to the citizens input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes. And Brad, is there anyone who raises their hand at this time?
Mr. Chairman, no one has raised their hand indicating they would like to speak.
All right. Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to regular business. Uh, the first item is the consent agenda, uh, which consists of approval of prior minutes as presented for, uh, December fifteenth, December twenty first and December twenty second of, uh, twenty twenty. It's also includes the approval of tax rule adjustments as presented, approval of accounts payable, and approval of the public forum, uh, agenda as presented. Are, are there any additions or deletions that, uh, commissioners wish to present? If not, I will declare that, uh, the consent agenda has been approved as presented. We will move on to, uh, action items and today's agenda does not have any action items on it. And, uh, so therefore we will move into the informational items, uh, and the first item up is the, uh, the informational briefing from Philip Smith Haynes, our county administrator. Uh, good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So, the purpose of this item today is really just for the commissioners to have a conversation about what you see as our successes and our upcoming challenges and where you would like the organization to go into the future. Um, thought that the end of the year would be a good time to reflect on this a little bit, uh, particularly the end of a year like this year has been. Um, it's good to think about the future and so I am just here to answer any questions that may come up and to take notes. So, um, be happy to address any of the items that were, uh, sort of sample things to think about, uh, but otherwise we'll leave it to the commissioners to have a conversation.
Okay, I'll, uh, uh, kick it off right quick, um, and then other commissioners can chime in, uh, as we dance around here. Uh, I've been approached by citizens regarding the, uh, the process for the, the jail. And I'd like for you to, to brief us on that. Uh, obviously we purchased the property. Uh, I think that we have already had the sa- uh, soil sampling done. I don't know that the results are in. And then the question arises, uh, the next step is, uh, groundbreaking, so to speak, from our viewpoint. And they're kind of curious as to why that process is about ten months away. So, and, and I know there's a lot of things involved in there. So Phil, if you could kind of fill us in there on that, how that process works, uh, as we move along.
Yeah, well, the somewhat cheeky answer to that question is that it takes a while to design an eighty million dollar building.
Right.
Um, so, yes, so the voters approved the, uh, sales tax, uh, for the jail as well as the issuance of bonds in the November third election. So the first thing that we had to do was to, um, get the sales tax information to the state. The county clerk has confirmed that all that information has been successfully uploaded and the state has everything they need. We had to get that done by December thirtieth in order for that sales tax to go into effect on April first. So that will really be the first thing that the citizens see in terms of the jail will be, um, the sales tax rate going up by half a percent starting April one of twenty twenty one. The next item that was on our agenda was to purchase land and, uh, earlier this month, the commission did approve a contract to purchase some land in the North Salina area for location of the jail that, uh, purchases contingent upon two items. The first item was the environmental, um, sampling, uh, soil sampling, uh, that you referred to, Mr. Chair, and that sampling has been completed, but we do not have the results back yet. They said it typically takes about two weeks. It might get delayed a little bit because of the holidays. Um, but we're anticipating that probably next week. The second item that was a contingency in that contract is, uh, for the property to be successfully rezoned uh, by the city of Salina and we anticipate, um, the timeline that we're working on there is, um, to have all the paperwork into the city of Salina by the middle of January. So that their planning commission can consider it in February and, uh, hopefully take it in front of the city commission by the first week in March. Um, that will allow us to actually close on the property. Um, meanwhile, our architect is working. We have had, uh, two meetings with staff of the, uh, sheriff's office to talk about specific design elements. Um, and we'll also be getting our stakeholder group back together to review where we are, um, in those plans. And so the, the plans are proceeding along, uh, based upon, uh, knowing, uh, where the site will be located. And, um, so that's, that's kind of where we are. It's going to take, um, several months for those plans to get completed and then transmitted from the architect to the construction manager, for the construction manager to then bid them out, um, as a package and, um, be in a position to break ground, which we anticipate, uh, doing in the fall of twenty twenty one.
Uh, Phil, from the presentation standpoint to the city planning commission, uh, does the architect do that? Do you do that? Uh, how, how does that, uh, uh, process or procedure take place?
Yeah, the architect is leading that. Um, I'm sure I will, uh, be in attendance, but the, the architect's in the lead on that.
All right. Thank you. Uh, do any other, uh, commissioners have any, uh, specific, uh, comments, uh, surrounding the jail and that process?
I'm, I'm the same way with you, Bob. I've gotten comments about, you know, where we are and why does it take so long? And it's just, you know, we weren't going to spend all that money designing a jail and then not having it pass. And that's normally my comment to them. I mean, the specifics of that and bidding it out, we weren't going to do. We weren't going to go to all that, that expense, you know, not knowing whether it would pass or not. So that's kind of my comments to, to other people.
That, that leads me to another question for you, Phil. The, the bidding process, uh, for all of the work, uh, is that done through the architectural firm or is that done through, uh, our construction manager Turner?
The construction manager.
Okay, thank you. Roger or Jim, do you have any comments surrounding the jail? None for Jim?
Well, I'll just break in. One of the things that we had is that I had quite a few comments, uh, and emails sent to me in regards to the cost that we paid for the land. And my whole, my whole answer back to that situation was is that, uh, hey, it's commercial property. It's a lot of acres, but per acre, uh, a lot, a lot more is paid per, uh, lot to go out here and build a house. So that's, that's only my comment on that whole situation.
Well, without question, you're, you're right. It, it doesn't come cheap. So, but that, uh, kind of takes care of our, uh, our jail situation. And I have another one that I would like to, to bring before the commission and, uh, specifically Phil, and that's the expo center. And where are we at in, in our, uh, selection of a cons- project manager, number one? And number two, I still am really questioning the fact that we even need a project manager. And, and I'll tell you why I say that is because the, the, uh, scope of things that are going to be going on over there is going to be under the scrutiny of inspectors from the city in the first place. You know, they're going to have somebody looking at the concrete. They're going to have someone looking at the, uh, construction of, and replacement of windows and so forth. And then overall, they're, they're going to look at our contract. And I just, I just am curious and questioning the fact that we even need a project manager. Uh, particularly when, when the scope of this project's going to go over five years. And there's going to be a lot of dead time in there. I think that between one, one scope of it to the next. So, uh, you might comment on that for us and where we're at in that process, please.
Well, that would be exactly why we need a project manager, uh, Mr. Chair, is because, um, the purpose of the project, one of the purposes of the project manager is to provide continuity over a project that's projected to last for five years. We don't know, um, you know, staff may come and go, uh, at, at the expo center here in this office, at the city. Um, the city inspectors are just there, um, to ensure that things are, uh, poured according to code. They're not there to make sure that we get what we, um, want. And so that's really the purpose of the project manager is to make sure that the, um, the, this commission gets what they want in the, the five-year construction. So where we are with that is that, um, we did receive four proposals from, um, project manager candidates. And, um, we have, uh, opened those, but, uh, have not begun the review. Just, um, those were received, I believe, on the twenty first of December. And so that was last week. Um, and with the holidays, um, have not assembled the, the review team yet, but that is in the offing right after the first of the year.
I have a question about that is, is, uh, pro- when you say a project manager, are you talking an architect? Or are you just talking about a construction firm or an individual that is used to being on site?
Um, we did not require a licensed architect. We did receive proposals from both architectural firms and, um, construction management firms.
Well, I, I mean, I, I think that, um, you know, when we do community corrections, I think somebody overseeing that would have been a little helpful instead of an employee that's, you know, really very, very, very busy. So I, I see that there's somebody, I'm not so sure that you need an architect because there's not that much to design. And, um, they're normally just then just going to hire somebody to oversee it. And so, you know, you're kind of double paying, but, um, not seeing any of the bids, you know, I defer my judgment on that.
Mr. Chair, if I might, uh, pipe in here, I, I think that this project going over five years and the scope of the project, uh, to have someone who can, who can, uh, give it a line of, um, how that work can be done over that period of time and make sure that the work is, uh, done in the correct order. And also, uh, as we move into, uh, hiring a, uh, an expo center, uh, a head, department head, he might be, uh, a, a subject matter expert on how to run an expo and how to, uh, bring in shows and, and promote the, uh, expo center. But he might not be a subject matter expert on, on construction methods and ways and, and the timeline that things need to happen to, uh, to, to meet the, uh, uh, blessing of the city as, as to how this should, uh, end up looking. So, I, I'm firmly a, a believer in having a construction manager and someone overseeing this project and, uh, that's my two cents.
Commissioner Sparks, you have any comments regarding the expo? Once again, Phil, uh, timeline wise, uh, you're, you say you have four candidates that, that have submitted applications. And going forward, well, how do you anticipate, uh, that washing out as far as, uh, you know, getting, getting someone selected and, and get our process going?
Yeah, like I said, we plan to start that, um, next week and, uh, get a team together to review the proposals. Um, make obviously a recommendation to the commission and, um, bring forward an, an RFA. Uh, and then get someone on board. We would like to get, uh, that person on board, um, prior to the time that, um, Rick leaves so that we can get sort of a data dump, uh, from him. Uh, he's certainly got, um, quite a bit of history with the project. And so what, and whoever is selected to have the benefit of a, of conversation with him before, before he retires.
Okay, um, Commissioner Wees, Commissioner Shadwick, Commissioner Sparks, uh, your comments, uh, regarding anything in general, whatever.
Just one more final thought on the expo center. Um, as I just think about it, I, I look around and, you know, five years from now, probably none of us are going to be here. So, I mean, it'd be nice to have somebody that has our vision and can carry that through. Um, and then on the comment on the, um, expo director, uh, Phil, in your, in your experience, is that a hard position to, to fill? You gotta, I mean, do we fill, you know, obviously we open it up to current employees and we open it up to everybody, but is that, is there a, a lot of people out there that do this?
So, um, Commissioner Shadwick, I will say I have no experience to bear. Uh, I've never hired an expo director because nobody has an expo center. Um, most people have a fairgrounds or something like that, but an expo center is, um, pretty rare, uh, breed. And so there aren't a lot of people who do this particular work. I mean, this is, a- a- as you know, the expo center is a little different than a convention center. It's a little different than a fairgrounds. It's a, it's both. It's neither. Um, and so, um, I do anticipate that, um, the candidate pool is going to be somewhat limited just because of the, the nature of the beast. Um, but we do have interviews, uh, scheduled, um, next Wednesday, I believe it is. Um, we got, um, I want to say it was nine applications in the first round here. And so, um, HR Director Marilyn Lemer and I, uh, have, uh, have some screening interviews with those folks. Mr. Chair, did you say something? You were muted there. You're still muted.
Yes, I was, uh, I noticed that Commissioner Sparks was unmuted at the time. I just wanted to know if he, uh, wanted to, uh, say something about the, the situation.
Well, one of the things, issues, uh, and, and I'm, I'm with that. I think that we need a, uh, you know, a person to oversee all the construction because I think there's going to be a, a lot more architectural and stuff going on there than we have realized. The one other thing I'd like to, to bring up there is, is, you know, if we're looking at new, new personnel and we're trying to hire somebody to come in there, is we might want to look at updating those offices down the road there too, into that facility, uh, you know, and stuff like that, because it's like, it's pretty outdated, pretty deal. You can't have a meeting in that room and listen if the furnace is going or the air conditioner. It's like, it's, uh, it's almost impossible. So, that's the one thing I'd like to do is, is on this whole processes, is kind of upgrade those offices a little bit.
That's a good point. Uh, Commissioner Wees, you have anything on the, regarding the expo then to finish that off or you, I guess you've already spoken that regard, but.
I, I will, uh, make the comment, uh, before we, uh, start putting a lot of money in, in the different barns and such, I would like someone, uh, to take a look at, uh, the cost of, I, I know that we're not doing a warm-up barn and, uh, the full scope of the picture that, uh, that was given to us, uh, uh, but it maybe, uh, the cost effectiveness of, of doing partially that, whether it be the, whether it just be the barns that we've been relocating and, uh, putting the money into new barn versus, uh, updating all the others down the road might serve us and also, uh, might be more appealing to the city if it was cost effective.
Thank you. All right, back to, uh, a couple of Phil's original comments, and that is, uh, uh, where does the commission want to be in, in twelve months from now or twenty-four months? Or what, what do you see, uh, perhaps as challenges for, uh, twenty twenty-one, um, as, as we move forward? Uh, obviously, uh, the COVID nineteen is, is a huge thing. Our, our, um, health department is huge. Um, I see a challenge ahead in twenty twenty-one, and that is the budget for twenty twenty-two. And, you know, that's a, pretty much an unknown at this time. What, what the fallout from the COVID is going to present us as, as, as far as the budget impacts for the following year. Obviously, twenty twenty-one is already set for the budget, but twenty twenty-two, by the time we get around to July and August, uh, there, there could be some interesting things that pop up. So, I think we need to, to be aware of that for sure. So, any rate, um, commissioners?
If I may, um, get back to the COVID thing, and, and I don't mean to say that the jail's not important or the radio project's not important or the expo center's not important, but I think that we've got the infrastructure in place to, to move on with those and not have that take up a a ton of our time. I think the COVID vaccination process is short-term number one by far. And it's, it's on everybody's mind. And I think that there's still some uncertainty out there. Ha, what is our role? What is the health department's role? How is the health department working with the hospital? Who's going to be doing these vaccinations? Um, because everything else really, like, like Bob said, that, you know, for us to be healthy and in, in the budget, we've got to, we've got to get past this. And, um, you know, number one, I, you know, I think that we need to do a better job. I think Jason does a great job. I'm not saying that. I mean, I just think that needs to be constant that, you know, where the vaccinations are, who's getting vaccinated right now? You know, I, I've had people say, is the health department going to give vaccinations? And I don't even have that answer. I mean, does the vaccination so far, my understanding has gone straight to the hospital and they're, they're making those decisions. And then the next phase will go straight to CBS and Walgreens. And they will vaccinate people in nursing homes. So, you know, what is the role in the health department, uh, of actually, actually getting the vaccine in, in somebody's arms? I, I don't know. I've been asked that question and I can't answer it. But I think that that's a, that's a public relations, um, necessity at this point.
Well, I, I share your, your comments and your, I echo your comments. And, uh, I think it was yesterday that I saw on the TV that, uh, it looks like the health department in Sedgwick County anyway, is totally in charge of everything. And for, I, I, I'm just still unclear. I'm not throwing a dart at the hospital or the, our, our health department, but I, I'm, I'm sure Commissioner Shadwick's concerns is, um, who is in charge? Who makes these decisions? Uh, and the first round of the vaccines went to the hospital direct without any knowledge of the, uh, of the health department, is my understanding. And so I, I too would like to kind of have a little firmer footing on what we're standing and where that thing is headed. Uh, I, I'm not sure where I'm going to get those answers, but, uh, I guess I'll start with you, Phil, and let you research it for us and, and find out what the, uh, you know, what we're, what we're looking at, uh, one, once that, uh, twenty twenty-one calendar flops over here. So.
Yeah, the, um, so you're correct. The first round of vaccinations went directly to Salina Regional Health Center, did not come through the health department. The second round of vaccinations did come to the health department for distribution, um, to health department employees, um, the federally qualified health center, which would be, um, Salina Family Healthcare and, uh, EMS staff. And so, um, that's sort of where we are. Monday morning at, I believe, eight thirty, Jason will be meeting, and I, I will be at the meeting as well, but Jason will be meeting with, um, Dr. Free Love, uh, the chief medical officer at Salina Regional, um, as well as folks from the city of Salina. Um, uh, Dr. Doopy, our medical, uh, advisor and, um, folks from Salina family as well. So, there is a group that is working on this, um, and they're meeting, um, they're trying to meet weekly. It's hasn't happened over the holiday weeks here, but, um, they're, they're trying to get together weekly and make sure. Um, frankly, there's not a lot of information coming out from the state about vaccines. Uh, that has continued to be a little bit of, uh, confusion um, at the state level. But, um, as soon as we, uh, know information and have information that's solid to pass along to the public, we will do that. The, um, the, uh, public relations person, the health department has engaged with some of their COVID money. She attends those meetings as well. So, she, um, will be preparing press releases when we have information to distribute.
Okay, I, I, I think it's imperative that, uh, we, we share our information as we get it as quickly as we can that, that can be released to the public because, um, uh, I, I mean, everybody, including myself, well, everybody's running scared, you know, is what, what we're going to do. The concerns are running high and, and, uh, you know, they've already changed some of the rules as far as, uh, who gets the shot and when they get it and, and, uh, what the pecking order is and that kind of thing. So, uh, from, from our county perspective, uh, we need, certainly need to keep people informed. And, and, uh, uh, again, I mean, what really got me thinking last night was that here's Sedgwick County's announcing all their plans and so forth, and, uh, they're, they're the ones that are in charge. And, um, we haven't, we haven't reached that pinnacle yet for ourselves. So, and I, and I do trust our people that are in charge of that. So.
And I do too. And, and Phil, the, the question, and it, well, from what you said, it's my understanding that all, everybody that in the health department that wanted a shot has gotten a shot and everybody that's an EMS that has wanted the shot has got the shot at this time?
I think that is correct, but I'm not a hundred percent on that. Um, either has gotten or will be getting shortly. I don't, I don't know the answer to which of those, but yeah.
Okay. And then that second question, or the second question, uh, uh, Bob brought up the, the term pecking order, and I kind of like that, but does Celine County establish the pecking order or is it from recommendations from the state or the CDC? You know, you read a lot of stuff and what, you know, when the rubber meets the road, who in Celine County finalizes that pecking order?
And my understanding is KDHE is in charge of the pecking order ultimately. And the CDC, I, I believe this is correct. The CDC makes recommendations. Um, but the, the KDHE is actually the one who has a legally enforceable, um, mandate for how the vaccines will be distributed. And so then mandate for how the vaccines will be distributed. And so then we're obviously where the rubber meets the road in terms of getting that done according to KDHE's guidelines. And so you know, that, that, that's really the health department's role is to make sure that that those KDHE guidelines get carried out in this community. And so that's, you know, one of the great things, one of the so one of the wonderful things about Salina is that we have collaborative relationship with the, between the health department and the hospital and the federally qualified health system. They're, they're all working together, like I said, they're all meeting together. That's great. The flip side of that is what the chairman was saying, sometimes, sometimes because of that collaborative relationship, there's not one person that appears to be the person in charge, like say in Sedgwick County. And so that can, I, I think the collaborative relationship is a great thing. It can also sometimes work against us if it creates some lack of clarity in the process.
Do you feel, do you feel that we have enough people, enough staff to implement everything that's coming? And do we have enough funding to implement everything that's coming? And if not, then what can this commission do to bolster both of those?
So one of the so it depends. What is what's coming, right? So if you're talking about the, just giving people two shots in the arm, that is a fairly, although it is significant, it is fairly simple. You don't need long-term staff, you know, you, you need to set up tents in parking lots and have people drive through and roll up their sleeve, right? I mean, vaccinations are something the health departments have done for 80, 90 years. And so that's, while it takes resources in terms of, you know, time and partnerships and, and that sort of thing, it's not technically complex. And so I don't really think that the health department is challenged in terms of staffing or funding to get that specific thing that but they are challenged in terms of the larger context in which they're operating, because as they're trying to stab people in the arm twice, they're also still dealing with over a thousand cases of people. I think it may be closer to 2,000 cases now of, of people in the community that they're monitoring for disease progression and contact tracing and all that kind of stuff. And so they don't have, have never had enough staff for that. But that has not been a funding issue. That has been an availability of people and availability of space issue. One of the things that I think would behoove the commission to talk about is the physical plant at the health department and not just in terms of COVID, because you know, COVID, we hope, pray, believe is going to go away in a year from now, or at least be a manageable condition like the flu. But there's going to be something else coming along after COVID. And we don't know what that is yet, but there is going to be something else coming along after COVID. And the health department was really constrained in this circumstance by their physical plant. They don't have enough office space over there. They don't, the roof on that building is poor. You know, there, there are all sorts of challenges with, if you've, if you've been over and toured that, which I know all the commissioners have, but others may not have. That building is a freaking maze. I mean, it like, I don't know which door to go in once I'm inside the building, because there are these like interior hallways and people are crammed everywhere. So I, I think that, you know, long-term, and it may not be something that we can tackle while we're, while we're doing the expo and the radio center and the jail and they're doing COVID, but at some point in time, I think talking about what the future of that building looks like, or whether we relocate them somewhere else and do something different with that building. I think that's a conversation that would be good to have at, at some point in the not horribly distant future. I hope that addresses your question, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, if, if I might, while we're on COVID, I know it's frustration. We don't know how many doses of vaccine will be available, how quickly they'll become available. But it would be interesting to know how, how the doses will be distributed amongst the state. Who, who determines how many, the quantity that goes into each county? And if KDHE has set up guidelines of, of the pecking order for the vaccination, could we not have that published and, and show that we have what, whatever category it is, it's going to take so many doses to do that, and the next one will be this, need so many doses. The biggest thing, the question I have and the answer is that people might like to hear is, what is the pecking order? If KDHE has established that, can we not make that public and print it out? And also how the state determines where these doses are distributed?
Yeah, I'll see if we can get that answered sooner rather than later.
I, I think there has been a, a list established as to how they're going to go about it, you know, with the, the hospital workers and first responders were the next group. And then some, I think over 75 or nursing homes came in there and, and care centers. And then, you know, they've even established an over 75. My concern, and, and I'm putting the cart before the horse a little bit, is when they start getting into the bigger groups, and I'm sure we've looked at that. When they say, and I'll just use the age group of 65 and over, which, you know, we're, Saline County's pretty heavily populated over 65. And they say, well, Monday morning, the 21st of February, whatever that date is, it's going to be 65 and over. I mean, I can almost guarantee you that over 90% of that population is probably going to go get that, that shot. And where's that line going to go? You know, I, I'm sure we've looked at that or already talking about that. I remember going over to the, to the expo center to get my flu shot this year through the, through the health department. And I mean, there was a line two miles long just to get the flu shot, let alone this pandemic shot. So there, there's some real issues there as far as I'm concerned. Back to your comment, Phil, on the physical plant, I've long been thinking about that, but it's kind of went away to the side simply by the pandemic itself. The COVID itself is, has put that on my back burner. We're, we've been hamstrung here a little bit. Previous commissions have, have sunk a lot of money in that building. And in my opinion, I mean, I share your concerns. That building is a, it's, it's a concern. It's, it's not very workable. People are stacked on top of each other and so forth. I, I think that probably almost guaranteed needs to go to the front burner for 2021 and start thinking about what we're going to do about that and how we're going to do it. What is it going to take? I mean, is that going to be a, a, a $2 million project? Is that going to be a $22 million project? I don't know. But we certainly need to get that, you know, brought from the back of the bus, clear to the front. We need to start looking at that pretty darn heavily and pretty quickly. Because who knows? I mean, 20, COVID hasn't went away yet. And who knows what's right behind it? Or if there is anything, we, you know, we just kind of get in that mainstream and float along. And that's, we need to really be concerned about that. So anything, Phil, and from what I'm hearing from Monty and Jim, we really need to be kept in the loop from the health department standpoint, you know, as in all facets of this, you know, how many doses are we going to get? Who's, who's, who's deciding who's going to get it? You know, what, what's the timetable, if there is a timetable? Any, any information that we can get out to the public is, is going to help the phone line in my house quit ringing. And
Yeah, and I will, I'll have a conversation with Jason today, but I know he will also be back in front of the commission next Tuesday for his regular updates. So I'll, I'll make sure that he has answers to as many of these questions as he has answers to. So, yep, got it.
Right. And, and that is exactly, I think, what we're, what our concern is here. And what we're trying to say, all of the commissioners is to, to give Jason a heads up and have some answers for us along the line, guidelines that we're talking about now, because obviously, the general public is wanting their, their answers also.
And even if he doesn't have the answer, that's a good enough answer for me to be able to pass along, because a lot of the public obviously doesn't follow media. And so it becomes getting stopped at the grocery store or, you know, walking down the street and, and it's, that's a lot easier for people than calling up the health department and clogging up their lines. So I mean, you know, even, even if it's a twice a week email, just like we're doing with the COVID update, I mean, on the deaths and, and the infection rate, even if it's twice a week, just letting us as commissioner knows how to give this information to the public, that would be helpful, because we want to make this easier for Jason and you. And, and it's really kind of our role also. But I just, I, and I'm not saying you're not doing it now. I just, it's, it's, it's going at a high rate of speed right now, people asking questions of me. And anything that you can give that I can pass along would just be helpful.
And, and we've already touched on it, you know, when, when people watch the, the five o'clock news, the six o'clock news, the 10 o'clock news, and Sedgwick County Health Department is doing this and all this and this and this, well, why isn't Saline County doing that? And that's their questions. And personally, I don't, I don't think any of us have that answer for them. So whatever you can do to, to move that along would be great. I, I, I will, I will change gears here a little bit. I also noticed the feds have all of a sudden said, hey, December 30th is not the deadline anymore to, to distribute your funds. You've got another year to do it. Well, we, we've just busted tail to be able to get all of this done. And you, you and your committees, Phil, and to get the money distributed. And now all of a sudden, we have another year to get things taken care of. I mean, you know, what, what a mess that is.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. So the, the change in federal legislation does not necessarily trickle down. So the federal government changed the deadline for states and for Sedgwick and Johnson counties that received their money directly from the feds. We did not receive money from the feds. We received money from the state of Kansas. And so the state of Kansas is indicating to us that we are not going to have a year. We may have about an additional three months. And that's actually great news. We had a couple of agencies that just, they tried their hardest, they really did, but they just did not get everything that they had ordered delivered by this week. And so giving them an extra couple of months to get stuff shipped is great. It's going to allow us to get all of that money spent. As of the accounts payable cycle that your commission is signing today, we will have spent $10,986,792.67 of the $11,026,434 that we received. That is 99.64% out the door on the original December 30th schedule. That does leave us a balance of $39,641.33 that we'll get out the door between now and March 1st, according to whatever the state tells us. So yeah, the, the committee has done a great job. The agencies that have been our partners have done a great job. And we will be getting out a press release tomorrow to thank them.
Will those, those, the $39,000 that's available, will that be opened up to new participants? No?
No, that is already spoken for. That is those agencies that haven't, that have things that they've ordered that haven't gotten out the door yet.
So it is asked for or applied for? Well, I, I, again, I don't want to just pat you on the back too much, but you, you and your group that, that have, and the Chamber of Commerce and the, the five public citizens who, who served on that committee to get that money out. I mean, this, they just did an unbelievable job. And as a public servant, I, I can't thank you enough for getting that done and, and getting the money to the people who really needed it from the business standpoint. So that, that's a great job by everyone involved there. So thank you very much. And Mr. Sparks or Weiss or Shadwick, what else is on your mind?
Not much. I just, I just hope that everybody has a great new year and safe and, and really follow the, the all the information we have about the social distancing and the, and the group sizes that we have in place. So anyway, it's like a happy 2021 and stay safe.
You know, I'll back up for just a second on, on, on my previous comments, and that regards the, the physical facility for the health department. And I, I don't want the citizens to, to think that we are a spend, spend, spend commission. I, I think a health facility obviously is a need, not a want, just as, as the, the jail was. So I think that is something that we really need to, as commissioners and as administration, we need to look at that facility and really look forward. I don't, even if it's, even if it's a 10-year forward, we need, we certainly need to look at that and, and start doing some planning. You know, the, the jail project was 20 years in the making or something to that effect, you know, and 10 years to fruition. And the last five have been, you know, very important. We need to treat the, the health facility the same way, because it, it's certainly a facility and, and an entity within our government that every single citizen relies upon. And, and we need to keep that in mind, and it's, it's very important. So Commissioner Shadwick?
Well, I'm assuming that the, the way that this is going on this is we almost need a master plan for facilities. You know, we've done things with the community corrections and we've done things with the jail, but we're, we're not going to be able to afford to do everything that we want. I mean, I know the senior center needs help and even before the jail gets built, the current jail is going to need some help. The health department is going to need some help. We're working on the expo center. And so this is appropriate to talk about this and, you know, make, make a master plan and not just make a one-year plan. You know, we're going to do it this year. It's okay, it's okay to have something identified that unfunded. You know, that maybe could happen down, down the road. And, and I think that it also helps future commissions to know that we've put some thought into this. And maybe the health department is five years away, maybe the senior center's four years away, or, or whatever, whatever we decide, but it really, I think, I think some sort of facility master plan would be helpful.
A great comment, Monty. And you know, the Band-Aids help stop the bleeding a little bit, but they don't solve the, they don't suture the wound, if you, if you will. So this, this really gives us some food for thought for, as, as we move forward and, and taking, taking the health department as an entity and then moving that forward as Monty says, in, in an overall facilities look, you know, instead of putting a new roof on a building or whatever, whatever the situation is, which is we're, we're jumping from project to project. And so good, good thought, Monty. Absolutely. Commissioner Wees, I'll see you're unmuted.
A, a couple of questions and, and a, a comment. I think it's imperative that we keep our infrastructure that we currently have in good, solid shape to take on new projects at the, at the expense of maintaining the buildings that we currently have, I think is is a bad decision. One, one thing that's on this briefing is is the engineering building. I, I'm not aware of how that got in there or what the issue might be. But I, I will say you, you take the, the senior center, that, that structure there, we need to make sure that that structurally is sound, that we, we don't let any more rot or decay take place, water damages, whether, whatever it takes to, to keep that building sound and viable, I, I think is money well spent. But all of it, like Monty said, there's going to, there's going to be a list, there's going to be costs put to that and then we'll decide where everything fits into that and, and project out the what year that might be that that goes from an unfunded event to a funded event.
And Jim, I, maybe you took my comments wrong. A, a facility's master plan is not all just new, new construction. It's taking what we have and, and planning and prioritizing. And so the senior center would be a perfect one. I also think that the current office space that, that we have in the city county building should be part of that.
I, I agree. I, I, no, I didn't misconstrue what you said. I, I was agreeing with, with what you said, especially when it comes to identifying these things and, and then finding funding down the road with it.
Right.
You know, and, and our conversation today is, in hindsight, is probably a, a couple of years past due for this commission. I mean, we've been in office for four years and we've just handled things as, as it's come along. And the, these are great, this is a great opportunity to start thinking about this in long-term and particularly it's, it's unfortunate that the COVID nineteen is, was what sparked some of our conversation here today, but, but it has. And that's the way it is. And, and now we need to be that progressive arm of the government to, to solve some issues and, and make sure we're in position. As, as you've said, five years from now or ten years from now, or even thinking about twenty years from now. And to me, the health department goes right to the top of the list in a real quick hurry. It's, it's too bad it's taken this COVID nineteen to open my eyes to that anyway. So all right, that having been said, unless someone else has something else that they want to bring up today. Phil, I really appreciate the opportunity that you've allowed the, the commission to come forward with some of this thought-provoking situations and ideas today. And we've obviously loaded up your plate with some things to get us some answers for. And I know that you'll take care of it. And we will have a, a good many of those answers, or at least the, the answer that there is no answer just yet. And, and we'll have that before us for next Tuesday's meeting.
If I could add one more thing, you know me, I don't like to extend meetings.
I didn't know that.
I know. Under longer-term items to consider, I think improve, the website needs to be a short-term goal of ours. If you look at that department, they're not, they're not bogged down right now with COVID or the jail or the radio project. I, I think we've got great staff there that has I'm, I'm assuming has the time to do that because I think long-term, we need to figure out ways for fewer and fewer people to have to come to the city county building. COVID has just kind of accelerated that. But you know, in a better website and a more user-friendly website and being able to do things on that website would be helpful. I still just don't get that people have to come in and write a check for their, their property taxes. I mean, you know, we, we need to make, I know that this is a state function, but we need to make sure that people have better ways to renew their tags. I know some people can do it online, but it is difficult. I did it this year and it was, it wasn't easy. And I just think that making things more user-friendly starts with a good website. And, you know, can stop some of those long lines and, and I would think that if you could you know, stop people having to come in, a lot of people, their only check that they write in the year is, is when they have to come to the treasurer's office. And there's got to be a better way to do that. And that's long-term, but I think a better website in the short-term would be helpful. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Monty. I agree. You know, every, every department, and we've asked for that, I think, and, and they've given us things and it's kind of just, you know, the, the flow of the stream is just kind of washed everything to the side a little bit, but we need to look at that over the entire county, Saline County operation. So we, we've hit on some really good points. I think we're we're headed in the right direction here. So unless someone has something else to bring before the commission for new business or a question for old business. And if I don't see a hand go up pretty quick that I see on the screen, I'm going to declare that this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending. Thank you for watching.